I will call this meeting to order.
Please stand for flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We shall have roll call, please. Patty?
All right. Councilmember Crails?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gullikson?
Yes.
Mayor Wallers?
Yes.
Well, welcome, everybody. Uh, I guess we'll begin this meeting like most of the others with my quote for the day. Uh, in the interest of Black History Month, uh, the quote that I selected today comes from Booker T. Washington. If you don't know who Booker was, he was an African-American educator, author, and orator and an advisor. And he was, of course, liberated from slavery during the Civil War. And the quote goes as this: "If you want to lift yourself up, lift up someone else." I like that. All right. We shall, uh, move on, uh, to the approval of the agenda. And I guess I will throw it back over to the council if there's any additions or corrections to the agenda. And if there are none, I'll just entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Citizens' comments. Uh, we have an invited guest tonight, and I guess at this point Sheriff Dingman, if you would like to, uh, come up and, uh, address us, the table, the room is all yours.
Awesome. Well, thank you for inviting me. Um, I will take up a whole bunch of your time, but I do have some things to go over, just very basic information. Um, and then if there are any questions, as long as they're not hard questions, I'll try to answer them. If they are hard questions, I'll get back to you.
Pass them on to Jason.
For those of you that don't know, this is my chief deputy, Jason Reed. There were some questions that were kind of posed ahead of time a little bit, so I've incorporated those into my, uh, little spiel I'm going to give here. So we're just going to start with the basics and move on. And like I said, if you have any questions even during it, stop me and I'll try to answer them. So, um, I want to start with how it's been going. It's been, uh, a year and a half roughly since we signed the contract. Overall, it's, from my perspective, it's almost unbelievable how smoothly it's all went. Um, this was a, it was a huge undertaking for both of us, the city and the county. And we worked together and came up with a, a good product, in my opinion, in the end. A lot of what I'm going to talk about is just to, uh, quell some concerns that you might have and might not. Um, from my perspective, things are going really well. Um, if someone would have asked me, um, how I think it would be going a year and a half into it, I, I honestly wouldn't think that it's going as, as good as it is right now, so. With that said, there have been some, some growing pains, but most of those are internally in our office as far as changing some procedures. And we essentially doubled the size of our office, so anytime you do that, you're going to have some, some minor bumps in your own nerves to get out, to get over. But I think we've done a good job at that. We're still working through some things. But all of those things are internal processes for us, nothing outward facing. Um, I think the citizens of Morris, um, haven't noticed any decrease in services. I've said this from, from early on, the only thing that the citizens of Morris will see is that it's a brown uniform instead of a blue one, so. Um, if you guys are hearing any complaints, make sure you tell them to see me, because believe it or not, I have not gotten one single complaint in the year and a half that we've had this contract. I'm not saying that there are no complaints, but no one has brought anything to my attention, so. If you have that, feel free to, either you guys give me a call or, or have the, anyone that has questions or concerns or complaints, give me a call and we'll talk it through. I have some stats. I could have, I could have, uh, brought enough stats here to bore us all to death, so I'm just going to keep it very high level. Some of these numbers kind of give a snapshot of, of the differences between the county and the city and now that we're together. So in 2023, really is the first full year that, that we met on our contract with you guys. Um, so I left my statistical numbers just for 2023. In the 2023, we had eight thousand and two total ICRs for the entire county. Okay? So five thousand four hundred and ninety-four of those eight thousand occurred within the city limits of Morris. So it's well over half of our total ICRs came from the city of Morris. And looking back at previous years for the sheriff's office and for the police department, these numbers are, are really in line with what they've always been. They're, for us, it's always been historically between four and five thousand, and same for you guys, maybe five hundred to a thousand more for the city of Morris. So it's tracking right on, on course as to what it used to be. It's just now that they're not, they're not split up, they're just all the sheriff's office sides here.
Do you think they're a little bit less really than years past? I mean, usually there's like a total of ten thousand. I, I think Morris is about the same, but it seems like maybe the total number might be different.
If you combine the county and the sheriff, or the county and the city. Um, I can go back and pull the numbers and email to you guys if you'd like.
Well, I mean, it's great if it is. I mean, it's, it's great that we're moving in that direction.
And some of that might be attributed to the fact that we're not doubling up on things like we used to say.
That could, yeah, I would say that's probably correct.
And I'll talk a little bit about, well, I'll talk about it right now. So assist other agencies. So back when we both had separate offices, sheriff's and police department, you know, depending on the day of the week, the schedule, a lot of times there was one PD guy on. Typically in the evenings, one PD guy on and one deputy on. So if we got a call in Chicago, that PD guy would, will come to Chicago and help us. That's a assist other agency ICR. Uh, and vice versa, if there was something going on in Morris, the deputy would come and help. So that scenario created two ICRs where now it's one ICR. So that might speak a little bit to the, the difference in numbers. I should back up. Everybody knows what an incident, what an ICR is?
Yep.
All right. Um, real quickly, not that any of this really matters, but days of the week numbers, Friday seems to be the busiest of, of the week. Sunday is the least busiest, and we're only talking a few hundred, over the course of a year, a few hundred different, difference in the ICR numbers. May is the busiest month, but March to August are the busiest timeframes, so. Which makes sense somewhere. Spring, summer is busier than the dead of winter. I already talked about the assist other agency, so, uh, in 2023, we had five hundred and thirty-nine total. Two hundred and ninety-seven were in the city of Morris. And assist other agency ICRs is like when we assist the fire department at a fire scene or go to a medical call with the ambulance service, um, the state patrol, the DNR. Any other agency that we assist, there's an ICR made, and that's the breakdown of those numbers. One thing that I found interesting is family service intakes or human services intakes, both child protection intakes and adult protection intakes. Last year, we had two hundred and seventy-seven of them total, and two hundred and thirty-six of them were in the city of Morris. And again, numbers can be a little, you can interpret them pretty much any way you want. I think the two hundred and thirty-six that happened in Morris are probably not two hundred and thirty-six separate incidents that occurred in the city of Morris. But when there's an unknown location, because the human services office is in the city of Morris, that's the address that's used. It does show that there are more in the city of Morris than out in the county, but probably not to that extent, so. That's all I have for stats. If you guys want anything more specific, let me know. I'm going to go over quickly the structure of the sheriff's office now that we're, um, under the contract. So we have myself, chief deputy Reed, we have a sergeant with two investigators, we have eight deputies, two, so that makes thirteen full-time licensed officers in the county. In addition to that, we have two transport deputies, and those are retired. They're full-time licensed, but they, they work on a part-time basis. They just transport, do court security stuff for us. We have an administrative assistant and two records managers. We have an emergency management director, one communications manager, four full-time dispatchers, two part-time dispatchers. That's kind of the, the makeup of our office. Since the contract, we've hired seven additional staff due to the contract, and that's six deputies and one records manager. Because of the contract, we added one additional full-time investigator for a total of two. We've added a sergeant. Both of those positions were promotions from within. They were, we didn't hire four of those positions. There were some questions about retention. So we signed the contract in August of twenty-two. And due to that contract, we were allowed, like I said, to hire six deputies and one records manager. And we filled those positions essentially immediately. Three of the six new deputies came from the Marshall Police Department, and the records manager came from the Marshall Police Department. Since then, though, um, one is still with us, currently as a deputy. One took a state job out at the university, so stayed locally but left for higher pay. And one was let go during the probationary period, just he didn't meet their standards. Also, kind of during that same timeframe, I lost another deputy, one of our original deputies, to the state patrol, again for higher pay. But yeah, he's still in this area, so. So again, we were able to fill those three vacancies again almost immediately. And I get asked quite a bit on how, how we do it, and it's, it's sometimes hard to answer that. We just, we have a great deal of stability in our office. And for whatever reason, we have an ability to fill vacancies that we have. Which, it's tough to put my finger on why, um, but whatever it is, we're going to keep doing it. It's, uh, I checked last week, and on the post-war website, there's two hundred and sixty agencies in Minnesota that have openings right now. And, and a lot of those agencies have multiple openings, so that's, that's, I don't know the total number of job openings, but two hundred and sixty different agencies have openings right now. Usually, it's about five hundred to five hundred and fifty people a year take the post pass to be eligible to be licensed, so. We're not putting out enough people to fill the current vacancies that we have on a statewide basis. Not kind of what we've been lucky to fill the vacancies we have. And again, it's, it's, uh, I don't like tooting my own horn, especially when I don't know the exact reasons why, but for whatever reasons, we're, we're able to fill, or at least we have been. So I hope that continues. Real briefly, I'll go over kind of our schedule. I don't want to get too deep into the weeds with, uh, details of the schedule, but early on in the, in the, uh, contract negotiations, there was, there was some discussion about whether or not we were going to have twenty-four hour coverage. And to be brutally honest, when this all started, I didn't know really what was feasible and what we were going to do either. Once we got to the end of those negotiations, we signed the contract, we have twenty-four hour coverage. We have a minimum of two deputies on twenty-four hours a day. We run twelve-hour shifts, so we have, essentially, we have patrol teams. So we have a team of two-day shift guys, sorry, two-day shift deputies, two-night shift deputies. That's one team, and then we have the same matching on the other team. And when they're working, they're off, and when they're working, they're off, and they just rotate. Twelve-hour shifts. They work night shift for three months, and then they switch to day shift for three. So every three months, they're rotating back and forth between days and nights. And we did that strategically too, because we don't want somebody to just get stuck working nights for ten years and nothing good happens with that, so. We get them out of the ball during the day and it makes them more well-rounded different. So because we have a minimum of two on, um, sometimes there's three, because we have a sergeant position. Like I mentioned, we have two teams. Um, but I only have one sergeant, so I don't have a sergeant for both teams. So the sergeant has kind of a modified schedule, and he's able to work his schedule, so he covers both teams instead of, in a perfect world, we would have another sergeant and have a sergeant on each team, but we can't do that. So we adjust his schedule, so he covers both sides for both teams. So there are, there are times when we have three deputies on at night. And during the day, there'll be two patrol deputies on, our two full-time investigators, and Jason and myself. So there's up to six of us out during the day. If there's, we've instructed these guys to, uh, if there's only two of them on, one guy stays in or around Morris, the other guy can be on the town, and they can flip-flop. They're not assigned to stay in Morris per shift. It's up to them, as long as they know they work together, one guy stays in Morris. One guy can roam and they can flip-flop. But if there is a call, say there's a, a more dangerous type of call happening in Chicago, then they both go to it, which really isn't any other different than, than when the police department was here, that police officer would go to Chicago and have us do something. We try to maintain, um, coverage the best we can in the city of Morris and in the county, and that's the best we've been able to come up with doing it. Um, Morris is the highest population in the county, so there should be somebody here or at least very close most of the time. So, um, I mentioned our two investigators. They are, uh, full-time investigators, but they're still deputies. They still wear a uniform. So if, if we get busy with calls, they come out and help. They generally don't do routine patrol if there's not a call happening, because they're busy doing investigations. So, um, how is the city of Morris benefiting from this contract? So we'll talk about that a little bit. I don't know if, if some or any of you have any, um, feelings on what, what you're getting for the contract, but there might be a, a common misconception with some people that, and, and not saying it's you guys, but just general citizens, that law enforcement is just patrol. It's, people think that we as law enforcement, our sole duty is to drive our own squad car and do cop stuff. Yeah, that is, that is a core function of law enforcement, but law enforcement is not just patrolling. Um, there's a lot more that goes into it that the public never sees. So what you guys are getting for a contract, you're getting the entire law enforcement process. You're not getting just patrol. And that, I think, is hard for some people, again, not you guys, but for some people to understand, because they just don't understand the whole lens and all sorts of law enforcement. Also, I think what you're getting for the contract is, is, um, veteran, experienced, well-established leadership in the law enforcement arena. Again, I, I don't toot my own horn very well. Between chief deputy Reed and myself, we have fifty-two years of law enforcement experience, uh, which I, I think speaks to the fact that we have a solid sheriff's office, well-respected, and that might lead to the, to the, uh, fact that we don't struggle as much as some places to fill vacancies when we have. Our investigators are seasoned, well-trained investigators. They're not, uh, young guys fresh out of school. They've both been around for a while. They have a lot of experience in investigations and training. Another thing I think you're getting that sometimes gets overlooked is, is, uh, emergency management, and I'll talk more about it later, but emergency management is under the umbrella of the sheriff's office. And our emergency management director is Donna Greiner, and I would feel comfortable in saying that she is probably one of the best emergency management directors in the state, so. There were some questions about some, uh, some sirens and things like that, but I, I'll skip ahead to, to what I think we should do with the emergency management topic. And that, I talked to Donna yesterday, and, uh, she was almost giddy about it. And I said, would you be willing to come to the city council at some, not tonight's meeting, but down the road, and just give them an overview of her's management? She's, she's more than willing to do that. So if that's something you guys would be interested in, I can, we could certainly, I mean, we're willing to do it. Still, I think, and then we could talk about sirens and all, all those things are right up her alley, and she gets excited about it, so. So just let me know if, if that's something you want to do in the future.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. It's, the emergency management piece of our sheriff's office is, it's, it's set up kind of in an unusual way. So Donna is our emergency management director. I am her deputy director. But emergency management is under sheriff's office, so I am her supervisor. So it's kind of one of these things. So I don't want to fool anyone here in thinking that, yes, I am Donna's supervisor, but she does all of the emergency management work. We just have to have a deputy director, so that's what I do. Sign stuff when she can, so. So I would, I would be much more comfortable with her coming to talk to you about our emergency management stuff than me, so. So there was some, some talk of, you know, what are you guys getting out of what you're paying us for this contract? I've, I've talked a little bit about that. I do think that you guys are paying less than you did when you had your own police department. But your level of service is not less. It's the same or, or maybe even better. One thing that I think is hard to, to measure, um, is that when you guys got rid of the police department, you got rid of a huge amount of liability, um, that we now have. And I don't know how to put a price on that, and I don't know if we need to put a price on it. It's just one thing that sometimes it's, it's, um, not a lot of people think about that. So there aren't any really new problems in terms of crime that we've experienced with the contract. The, the crime ebbs and flows. It's just a matter of who was dealing with that crime. Now that the police department doesn't exist, all of the problems in Stevens County are our problems, and, and that's part of law enforcement. But due to the contract, I don't think there are anything, there isn't anything new that, uh, any new problems this first time. Questions about outreach programs? So we do, as you know, the Stevens County Fair is huge to us. That's the, the biggest event that we have in the county, and it's the biggest opportunity that we have to talk to the most amount of people. And we take advantage of that. We're, we take the fair very seriously. As you guys know, we, we have our sheriff's office tent. The police department used to have the shed down there. We kept it both. We wanted, both of those locations were, have been established, been there for years. We didn't want to move one of them, consolidate it into one, simply because if somebody has an issue, they're used to knowing where that police department shed used to be and know where ours is. We wanted to keep them both, and we staffed them both, during the whole fair, so. That's huge for us. This past Christmas season, we did our second year of Shop with the Cop, and that seems to be, um, very popular. We work with human services to identify families in need. Human services gives us the names. We take care of the rest of it. We have a little pizza party for them, and it's all done with donations, so there's no more tax points to be done. We participate in the I Got Cop campaign by the Dairy Queen. Um, that's where we stop the kids that are wearing the appropriate helmets and things like that, give them ice cream certificates. That seems to be a hit.
What did you call that? I'm sorry.
I got copped. Means I got caught wearing a helmet like I'm supposed to, and then you get a free ice cream cone.
Oh, okay.
So. Put your helmet on when you ride your bike, we'll get you a free ice cream cone.
All right.
We give a lot of law enforcement-centered tours, um, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, daycares, preschools, homeschool groups. A couple of times a year, the high school civics class comes and tours, so that's like three or four tours itself right there. And other civic organization, organizations, um, come and do a, do a tour. We, we take them through the whole facility, describe, you know, processing arrestees, what to do with them, where we put them, things like that. It's, I think it's good. The topic of the school resource officer comes up occasionally. When the police department existed, there was a school resource officer there. When the police department existed, there was a school resource officer there. The topic has come up various times, um, we, we have meetings with the school to go over their safety plans, things like that. I have even brought it up to the school before, just to gauge their interest. And it seems to be a very low amount of interest from the school. We are open to the idea, but the thing with it is, it's really a decision that needs to be made by the school, and quite frankly, it needs to be paid for by the school because we don't have the staff to, to fill that position right now. With that said though, there is a possible solution to it, and there wouldn't be a uniformed deputy school resource officer position. So this last legislative session, the probation department we got an influx of cash, like historic amount of cash. So the probation department here is a five-county consortium, it's uh, Stevens, Grant, Big Stone, Travers, and Wilkens. So they are, they receive so much money from the legislature that they quite honestly don't know what to do with it all, so they're coming up with ideas. One idea is to put a probation agent in the school, or schools, instead of a uniformed deputy. And I kind of like that idea, there's obviously a lot of details to work out, and I really don't have any say over the probation, that's a totally separate department. But I would be willing to work with whatever they needed to help make that happen, so. Stay tuned on that, it's, it's an idea that's picking up steam, so. Real quickly, I'll go over some notable projects we did in twenty-three and early twenty-four, spilling into twenty-four. As you guys know, we, we uh, did the Body Cam Squad Cam project. We've been rolling with our Body Camps now for three months?
Yeah.
Working fantastically. It's one of those things where we really didn't know what we didn't know, and it's one of those things where I wish we would have them sooner. By without, when there was six of us, but now that there's thirteen of us, it kind of shined a light on some of the things that we needed to shore up, and one of those was evidence, our evidence management. So we got a, a good software system there, we're working through, it'll be slick, and it was relatively inexpensive. Along those same lines is we've doubled the amount of squad cars we now have. So we looked into a fleet tracking system, again, we've, we found one that's relatively inexpensive and I think is going fit our needs, it's uh, there'll actually be barcode, barcodes in the squad cars, so at the beginning of each shift, they take their work phone out, scan the barcode, they can keep track of oil changes, any maintenance issues, um, inventory of their equipment in their squad cars, and it lets Reed and I, he'll manage maintenance issues, so we don't have a deputy forget to change his oil for twenty thousand miles or something like that, so. We are replacing our handguns for the, for the sheriff's office, so that's uh, all of our handguns, including the ones from the city of Morris, were about eleven years old. Uh, eleven years ago, both of us decided to buy new handguns at the same time, so that, that was, that was nice that they're all about the same age, we replace them all. Uh, we trade in our old ones, so it was a relatively inexpensive project. One thing we're excited about is, uh, we've started a drone program. We got a, a drone. Actually, we have two drones, one was given to us through, uh, Pope County has a very robust drone program that they've had for a long time, and they actually gave us one of their old ones. And at roughly the same time, we, uh, we got a nice grant from Cargill uh, for a drone, so we've, we've stood up a drone program, we got guys going to training. And I think the, uh, the uses for that, we haven't even identified all of them, so I think it'll be good. Talked about the emergency management stuff.
You have one on each team that's going for, to get their pilot's license or obtaining it presently?
That will be the minimum, yep, yep. At least one on each team, yep.
I know you need, what is it, one oh seven or whatever it is?
Yeah, Reed's actually a pilot.
Part one oh seven?
Yep. So, might be all, hey, if you guys have any questions for me, or there's something else you'd like me to talk about?
Do we concentrate on the school in the mornings and the afternoons when we have a higher traffic flow with the, the students coming and going? I would just hope that, I've had some com- comment from some of the residents on the speed on Columbia coming off of twenty-eight and just and that was one of the questions I think I presented to turn in, but just hopefully we are able to concentrate a bit more around the school hours when students are coming and going.
We certainly try to, yep, yep.
Are we still doing a lot of our court appearances by Zoom, or are we still trafficking prisoners back and forth in the initial?
Um, a lot of it is Zoom, um, and even though that, you know, we were forced to do Zoom because of COVID, COVID's whatever.
Lord God, we're never gonna see it again.
Right. But I think the, the court system had, throughout Zoom, realized that, hey, this works pretty slick, so. Now that COVID is coming on, we're there, Zoom hearings are here to stay.
Good.
That doesn't, that doesn't get rid of all of our transports, but we reduce the hassle, yeah.
Just after we've done it, it seems like it makes a lot of sense for the initial back and forth and to make your what you have to do.
Yep, it's very slick.
Super.
Yep. There are some, depending on which jail we use, for example, if we use Douglas County Jail, they're in a different judicial district, they have different in custody times. So their in custody times don't jive well with our in custody times. So if we have somebody in, in Douglas, we typically have to go pick them up and bring them back, and we have a Zoom hearing right from our courthouse area. But even with that said, it, it still has reduced the amount of windshield time dramatically, which, which helps, so.
Well, Jason, I just have, you know, first of all, I want to thank you for you and your staff and all the hard work that you've done and, and for coming here and giving us this report. Um, I just want to step back and just make a comment, basically kind of looking at a general view of law enforcement, um, and how some of the changes that, as we all know, over the years with the drawdown, um, I think the biggest losers in all of that were our youth. Uh, and I think we all heard, I know when we had a law enforcement, uh, the comment made by a lot of people that we spend too much money on law enforcement, had too many officers. And I guess I've never looked at it that way, I always, I always have looked and viewed law enforcement as an investment in our future, our kids. So I was very glad to hear some of the outreach things that you, you know, that you're offering, and maybe just challenge you to maybe think about other ways we can engage with our youth, because once again, I think, you know, we as adults, we make decisions a lot of times based on dollars and cents. And, you know, I think if we can spin it a different way and maybe invest in our youth, uh, I don't think I need to probably inform everybody that teen suicides are up across our country. Stat, very sad statistics, so I think the more we can invest in our youth and the more time we can spend with them, I think that's just money well spent, so.
I agree. And there are a couple of things I probably failed to mention on that topic, um, we're planning to do a, a bike rodeo this summer, and there, we've had some discussions about actually a youth ice fishing contest, I mean, we didn't get that set up this year, but possibly next year, so. We're, we're always thinking, and it, and these ideas aren't all mine, actually, very few of them are mine, it's my deputies that come to me with, hey, I got an idea, what do you think about this? So we look into it, if it's feasible, we'll do it.
Yep.
If not, we'll, uh, we'll get the next one, so.
Thank you for doing that, I think it's important.
Yeah, so I fully understand law enforcement is, it's expensive. And it's one of those things that nobody really wants until you need it, and then you really want it. So it's kind of like insurance, nobody wants to pay for it until you need to use it, you know?
True.
So.
One other subject that keeps getting tossed around, some of the discussions I have with different people on the storm and the deputy and the chief, but just a, a storm shelter location for residents if they're at the park or the trailer courts or vulnerable addresses or places where they are, on us doing something, courthouse, the city, if we, we, we need to do something there, and just with Donna, if we do get a chance to bring her in to, for us to work on that collectively.
I agree, and I guarantee you, she's already thought of all things. She is really good at finding money out there, especially for emergency management-related things, so let's work on that, I agree. I don't want to spend a lot of time on it because it was in the paper, but you guys all know about the weather radar that they put up on Wendell? That should help us a little bit. So our, our radar data comes from Chan Hassen, and I'm not an expert in this, but it's described to me where that radar shoots out in a straight line. Triverture of the earth, where we are, it's seeing way up high. So that radar is not picking up what it needs to out here. So what ends up happening is we have to rely on us and the fire departments, the weather spotters, um, and sometimes by the time Chan Hassen tells us we're there to spot, that storm is already here, and it's too late, so I'm Donna will talk at length about this, but the, uh, the gap radar, they call it, that was put up on Wendell should help alleviate some of that. Except that radar, in my understanding of it, that information is not going to Chan Hassen to supplement theirs, that's only the appliance of this radar gap, so. So our dispatch is going to see the Wendell radar and the Chan Hassen radar, and the one in South Dakota, there's several grand forks, we kind of, we were in a, in a dead spot here, so the Wendell radar is going to help, but our dispatchers are going to need to piece that information together to get us out there soon enough so that we can spot the weather and, and have enough time to, to summon sirens. It's, it's been a problem forever and, and hopefully we're taking the right steps to try to fix it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd just like to say, you know, thanks, I'm, I'm glad it's going well, I, I, I thought it would. You guys do a great job, I mean, we were in the negotiations with it, and uh, I think the biggest thing that I've seen is just the experience of the officers. Um, you know, what, what we're taking care of, what more important things that are getting taken care of, and getting taken care of correctly, and only have to do it once, I think that's probably some of the biggest, I won't go into length about it, but you and I know what we're talking about, so. I think those are some of the things that I really see with this, um, and quite frankly, I haven't fielded any complaints either.
Good, that's my goal.
You know, maybe just dumb ones, like, hey, you're driving too fast there, I'm like, okay, whatever, you know, I think it's probably just a jest, but other than that, no, I just, I just haven't heard anything, it, and that's to me, that shut off the complaints, I was getting so many before that this has really been really great, so thank you guys for doing a great job, I really do appreciate it.
And I'd just like to add too, now with the larger staff, some of the complaints a year and a half ago or whenever that I would, would hear from people in the audience was, you know, um, the turnover, you've addressed that, you don't seem to have a huge problem at this time if there is turnover in rehiring. Um, I think with that larger staff, the level of expertise that every company can be in, where our small highly turned over s- police department, where they were never able to get that staff, that expertise, because they were always rotating through, and I think you've proven that with your levels now that you have on, um, so that's great, so I think those things, the twenty-four hour coverage, everything that I remember hearing about has been addressed, doesn't seem like there's less calls, there's still presence, um, and so I, I know I've dealt with a few issues at, um, at work, and so I always know problems and response time is quick, and, you know, I really appreciate the amount of time and energy this has probably taken for you to get things rolling and to get stabilization, and anytime you're adding two, uh, groups together, it's a little tough, so thank you, thank you all for your job.
I appreciate it. All right, I'll let you get back to your.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you, Jason. Carry on.
All right, we shall move on. Uh, we have no public hearings tonight. Um, we shall, uh, look at the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, uh, reading and approval of the minutes.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes for one twenty-three, twenty-four.
I will second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the January twenty-third regular meeting minutes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carried. And we have the cond- condensed version of the minutes from January twenty-third.
I'll make a motion to approve the condensed version of the one twenty-three, twenty-four minutes.
I will second.
Motion and a second to approve the condensed version of the minutes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have the consent agenda, which consists of the object of city bills, gambling reports, the January transit report, and the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three uh, tree board minutes.
I will make a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the items on the consent agenda, before we put it to a vote, is there any discussions on any of those items? I just have one item, maybe Wendy can explain this, line item sixty-two, the RFC joint powers cap at thirty thousand dollars, could you explain that a little bit? What's that all about?
I, I can explain it, so they had requested to put in our budget, um, thirty thousand dollars to do an upgrade to their system to have a twenty-four access.
Okay.
So we approved, um, putting that into our budget, so it's a twenty-four access.
That was a one-time.
Yeah, correct.
We, we talked about it at our annual budget.
I think I mentioned that last meeting that we should, or.
Have them make requests when it's here.
Yep.
So we capped it at thirty thousand, is that going to be just like cumulative, I mean, as it goes along, they just, are we going to give them one lump sum?
One lump sum.
Just here goes and.
Yeah, all, all, all of the entities came in and did the same.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, good deal.
We're still making our annual contribution, that was just a one-time to, to catch up on some things.
Give them a boost, yep, okay, yeah, I remember that, I just didn't really quite know how it was working, but thank you. Any other discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda? We had a motion and a second, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign, motion carried. We shall move on to petitions, requests, and communications. First up is, uh, we have before us a donation from the Rose Marie Abbott for the Morris Fire Department. And that was in the amount of got it here somewhere.
I will move approval of the donation to the fire department.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Motion carried. We have next a donation from the Morris Hockey Association for the ADA swing.
I will move approval for the, from the Morris Hockey Association for the more, uh, ADA swing in East Side Park.
I will second that and a thank you to the Morris Hockey Association for their seven hundred fifty dollar donation out of the charitable gambling fund that they do run in the city and around the area.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second to accept that donation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have an appointment to the tourism board, Ms. Brandy Moore.
I'll move approval of the appointment of Brandy Moore to the tourism board.
I will second.
And thank her for her, for doing that.
Yes. Now Brandy will be an ace addition. Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Brandy Moore to the tourism board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have an application for exempt permit from the AMVETS post two ninety.
I will move approval of, uh, application for the AMVETS for an exempt permit. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve that exempt permit from the AMVETS. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Uh, next before us is, uh, a tourism funds Prairie Harvest Fest recommendation. Becca, would you want to speak to that at all or?
I sure can. So the tourism board met, um, last week and they talked. They had a few different, um, requests in front of them. One was the Prairie Harvest Fest for bounce houses and fireworks. They are recommending to council to authorize five thousand dollars be spent on the kids' games and fireworks combined. Um, the last few years, we've put about seventy-five hundred for fireworks and then an extra about twenty-four hundred for, for bounce houses. So with the cost of both of those, I would recommend that the, um, council keep what they've been doing for the last few years and doing the seventy-five hundred for fireworks and about that twenty-four hundred for the, for the bounce houses.
Okay, any further discussion on the request? Recommendation?
Basically looking for a motion to approve the recommendations.
I, with an addition of, I'll make a recommendation that we, I'll make a motion to approve um, tourism board money going for seventy-five hundred dollars up to seventy, or seventy-five hundred dollars to the, so it's a little higher than what, um, the tourism board recommended. So seventy-five hundred for fireworks and about twenty-four hundred for the, um, games. Which would be more than what the tourism board, but we have been spending, we have been approving ten thousand dollars for this event for the last several years.
Right. That's right in the ballpark.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the tourism funds for the Prairie Harvest Fest. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. And then we have, uh, an additional tourism board marketing recommendation.
Yeah, so, um, with the recommendations, uh, Prairie Renaissance Cultural Alliance um, has asked for advertising for their PRCA Metal Festival, which will be held September ninth. And then doing some advertising for the Tin Man Triathlon on May fourth. So both of those, um, were recommended to come to council through the tourism board and I would recommend making a motion to approve those also.
Do we have any dollar amount or who makes the dollar amount recommendation?
So there's, there's kind of like a tiers, although we didn't really get into, into that one with this last meeting. It was more, let's just, um, have them do kind of what kind of advertising click content did last year for them? So, because click content kind of sets on where they feel the, the best advertisement for, will be for these type of events.
So our tourism board will decide, not the individual.
Right.
That was part of our process was, that was coming in.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's what our tourism board money should be used for to try to bring people into our town.
Absolutely.
I will make that a motion to authorize the spending for those two events.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Yeah, the Metal Festival and the Tin Man. Of course, my Tin Man days are in my rearview mirror, but that's the way that goes. But two, two great events and I think it does draw a lot of people to town. So we have a motion and a second to approve those, uh, tourism marketing, uh, recommendations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, we have a few ordinances and resolutions before us tonight. Uh, the first resolution is a resolution approving a labor contract with the AFSCME unit local twenty, twenty-two general unit. Uh, I think we all received, uh, the correspondence on those. Becca, would you allow, I just maybe speak to these as we go along?
Yeah, I can kind of just go over some of the changes with the general unit. So the general unit, unit was adding language and to include paying the part-time employees, um, a rate of time and a half for the hours worked on any recognized holiday we had. Um, adding Juneteenth as a recognized holiday. Um, language being added to use the seniority date for moving a part-time position to a full-time position in regards to vacation and sick time schedules. And then to make, um, contracts kind of all standard, they're switching their vacation schedule, the, um, the public works had, had an extra vacation time slot in there. Um, so had all of the contracts made similar to, to that. And then past practice was using, they could use vacation in their, uh, probationary period. So kind of aligning the wording with what was actually being practiced. So those were the changes in the general contract. Oh, and then the wage increase of five percent. It is a one-year contract. All of them, um, were doing, um, a wage study, compensation study. And in hopes to start negotiations sooner and kind of seeing where we fall in the market. So at the next meeting, I won't be here, but I'll give you, um, a contract, uh, looking, um, at a company to kind of oversee some of this, um, compensation study to see where we're, where we're at in the market.
I've seen on there, they have, there's, is it fourteen recognized holidays now in the contract?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Oh, okay.
Pretty much.
It wasn't.
Federal holidays on.
I didn't know that they, they just coincide with what federal ones?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you get them?
No.
Okay, that's weird. I thought that was a lot. You get like three hundred sixty-five. Okay, I just was like, oh, okay. Oh, that's a lot. Yeah.
Any further discussion on that resolution?
Do we have a motion on it?
Not yet. I was waiting to see if you're done chatting.
All right, I'll, I'll move on to resolution approving the labor contract with the AFSCME unit local two zero two two general unit.
I'll second that mouthful.
Well, there, there we go. We have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. Approving a labor, labor contract with the AFSCME unit twenty, local twenty twenty-two general unit. We will have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Crails.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Gullickson.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. Next up is a resolution approving a labor con- contract with the AFSCME unit local twenty twenty-two Public Works Unit. And Becca, if you wanted to maybe just interject a little bit there, that'd be fine.
So again, this is a one-year contract, a five percent increase. Um, they added changing their overtime compensation bank, um, from forty to eighty and then adding that Juneteenth holiday.
Any questions on that resolution? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion approving a resolution for a labor contract with the AFSCME Union Local Twenty Twenty Two Public Works Unit for the period of twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
All right, we had a motion and a second to approve that resolution for the, uh, Public Works Unit. We'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Salvi.
Yes.
Crails.
Yes.
Gullickson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. Next is, uh, before us, a resolution approving an, a non-union employee policy for the period twenty twenty-four. And again, Becca, if you want to interject, you sure can.
So some of the, some of this stuff was a little bit of housekeeping. We added the human resource and accounting specialist um, as a non-union employee on the list. We took out the police chief and the police secretary. We removed, um, discharge of a police chief. To keep everything uniform again, we changed the overtime, uh, bank from forty to eighty. Uh, and then removing a special agreement that wording was in there for the engineering inspector that could carry over four hundred and eighty hours. So we don't have an engineering inspector anymore. So that came out. Um, added the Juneteenth, um, adding in the part-time employees working, um, getting time and a half on any recognized holiday. Conformed with the vacation schedule to match and then remove the uniform reimbursement for the police chief.
I see that non-union group encompasses about fifteen positions. If I read that right.
Yeah. So most of, well, all your department heads.
All the department heads, yeah, and including yourself and
And then sustainability.
The sustainability griffin guy and.
Yeah, deputy clerk.
For sure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on that resolution?
I will move approving on the resolution for a non-union employee policy for the, uh, twenty twenty-four period for our non-union employees.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve that non-union contract. Uh, once again, roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Gullickson.
Yes.
Crails.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. All right, moving on, we have a resolution accepting a bid and award, awarding a contract for the Morris Transit Garage addition and remodeling project. You want to maybe just shed a little bit of light on that once again?
Yeah, I have Jeff here that, um, so if you want to have him kind of discuss the bid process and what we've got for bids.
Usually doesn't take that long to get to you.
Thank you for your patience.
No problem. Um, so, yes, we received bits for the bus garage, uh, for the city of Morris here on, uh, January thirtieth. We had, uh, five bits. You can see, I think I provided a letter of recommendation there. Ranging from low for North Sun construction of eight sixty-six thousand to a high of one point three some million dollars there. Um, and, uh, we checked out with a little contractor. They're comfortable with their bid. Um, we would recommend, uh, you guys move forward contingent upon MinDOT transit approval. Also, I think attached in the packet is kind of a, a schedule of values, um, a further breakdown there traditional lump sum bid price into smaller units. Um, it kind of breaks out the site work, the concrete, the carpentry, various little finishes and stuff. Um, the electricals, the mechanical stuff. So it gives you a better idea for us to look for if there's anything that is glaring missing or inappropriate in the bid. So it looks like to be a good bid. Um, also included in the packet, if we so choose to move forward, would be a notice of award document that comes out of the proposal that, uh, is uh, part of the original package that goes out to respective bidders. So I will, uh, a copy of their bid. Um, some of their documents that they submit along with their, uh, bid bond. Certificate of liability insurance there, so. Think they're looking to move forward. I think there might be a schedule, uh, tentative preliminary schedule that's also included. Sounds like they want to do an early, early start or as soon as weather kind of starts to cooperate here in the spring.
Refresh, what exactly are they going to do again? Because I know we had a big plan and then we've narrowed it down several times. So what is the bus garage addition now?
So, um, right now I believe you have five bays out there. Um, one of the bays is going to be converted from a bay into an office area. The other bays will remain. We'll add then the addition onto the very west end of the existing building structure. Uh, two more bays plus a third where they can actually do park and wash on that third extra bay. I believe with some additional monies and grants, they're potentially going to be able to house an electric bus stall. Um, this will kind of set it up and I think there's additional grant dollars that you're going after, I think for some of that work, correct? Does that sound right?
Yeah, yeah, we have the grants all ready to go. We're just waiting for construction of the building and then the arrival of the bus and then the charging stations.
To add that on, this existing one that we're doing or to convert one of the stalls over to the electric?
One of the stalls will house that.
Okay.
It was designed accordingly.
Any experience working with North Sun at all? I've, I've never heard of them before. You probably have.
I have not myself personally, but our company has several projects. Yeah, good company.
Yeah, I see that there was about ninety, roughly ninety thousand dollars separating their bid from the, the next lowest bid. Yeah, it, it looks like the number that we're finally settling on here is closer to what we were planning on.
Yes.
So I know Blaine, we, we were about five hundred thousand north of that before at least.
Yes.
Yeah.
The additional owner provided expenses including a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight. Engineering soft costs, permits, inspections, site prep, furniture, fixtures.
Yep.
That's a hundred percent on us?
Yes.
Thank you for the information, Jeff. Any questions of Jeff before we?
And I think I read in there somewhere completion date of the end of the year, December thirty-first.
We needed to be able to spend the money, grant dollars, uh, by the end of the year. So we did put that in there. Yep.
Everything that they have in there, I looked through it pretty thoroughly because that's what I do at my regular nine to five, right? It looks like they hit all the high level. It didn't look like they were missing anything from, from what I saw. So with that, um, I will make a motion for the approval, uh, accepting and awarding a bid. Of, bid and awarding a contract for the Morris Transit Garage addition and remodeling project with North Sun.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve that bid. We shall have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gullickson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Crails.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep, thank you. So we will put together the contracts. There's a draft been, uh, floating around already. Um, put those contracts together along with this notice of award. Uh, it'll go out to the contractor. They'll, uh, notify their bonding. It'll go out to the contractor. They'll notify their bonding company, get the bonds in place. Those contracts will come back then for the city to sign at some point here in the future.
Great.
They'll also be reviewed by Minda Bryan, their representative there, so. Okay?
Thank you for your work on this, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We finally got her where we wanted to. It was a battle.
Yes, there was a little bit of a struggle, but we did get through it.
That pays to wait. Patience pays off in this example, in this instance, I guess. All right, we shall move on. Line item E, we have a resolution approving a service agreement with SafeSure. This is something new to us.
This is something new. So we've been partnering with the county for safety training. When they decided to go with SafeSure, we kind of needed to look to see what what we were gonna do. Talk to them and feel like it's the best fit for us. They'll help us with any policies that we need in place for OSHA. They will come out, not monthly, but probably at least nine times. When I looked at the schedule, eight or nine times throughout the year to do our trainings that are required, so. It'll be for all employees and then the bulk of it will be public works. So benefits of having them, like I said, they'll do the policies. They'll conduct OSHA audits of our buildings and then they'll provide access to SDS database specific to what we have here, which is a big thing if OSHA ever comes, so. I guess I would recommend that you pass a resolution going with them and then utilizing our public safety funds for this.
I can tell you that those simulated, those simulated inspections are absolutely invaluable because that gets you, not that you want to have something show up or whatever, but you also don't want it to be the first time you've ever seen an inspector of any sort, right? So having that is invaluable and and the SDS and the and the files, like we have that at work and that's extremely important as well, right? They should be doing everything properly and this this training would be a good asset to have.
Now, the ninety-four hundred and seventy-four dollars, is that an annual thing then, Beck?
It would be, yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to revisit that.
We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to redo the contract and then start making it in our budget.
Okay. I think it's good. I agree with Zach.
Fire department included with all city employees on this?
I think I can ask Matt. I think a lot of, I think they do some of their own trainings.
They do their own.
But if they're wanting to do it, I'm sure we can include them in that.
Just curious if they need to be included or I, it seemed like they, when I was on the department, that they did their own in-house, but just.
I can ask him if he wants to.
It might be advantageous to, if we're already doing some of this, to incorporate some of that as well.
I was just looking at the time slots. It said all city employees. It was eight to ten, ten to twelve, or one to three, but just working with the department guys are normally after a normal job, but just if at all possible to do a class that would fit in with them, if that's something that we're gonna do for the department or if they're doing their own, but just to double check on that, please.
Okay, any further discussion on the SafeSure agreement? Hearing none. I guess I can move approval of that resolution, approving a service agreement with SafeSure.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll have roll call on that res, roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Crails.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Gullickson.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. All right, we're gaining on it. We have a resolution establishing the Prairie Harvest Fest as an official city community event. And if you wanna speak to that, you sure can.
Yeah, so with with talking about the tourism recommendations for Prairie Harvest Fest, I thought it would be a good time to bring up the resolution that was brought forward last year that established Prairie Harvest Fest as an official city community event in which we can use then funds for. So I'm just gonna ask that we approve, or you that you approve that again this year?
What are the funds that we can use for it?
So they have been taken out of the tourism.
We can use our tourism funds for that?
So that that's where that's where some of the learning will be. I know, like I was talking to the city of Marshall and they she sent an email that they they use their funds for a lot of their different events, so I'm having a phone conversation with their the gal that does all their visitor stuff and I'll learn a whole lot more at the at the conference in a couple of weeks to see what we can all utilize these funds for, but yeah.
I think the declaration will help kind of clear the clear the air, so to speak, or make it a little more clean.
It seems like we've done this type of thing previously. Is this something we have to do annually or can we just have it that it's an annual event of the city? I mean, I think we all know we've been doing the Prairie Pioneer Days or the Prairie Harvest Fest has taken it over, but that it just, or is it just something we need to do for housekeeping with our funding or?
I think you should just probably do it as like a housekeeping.
Well, and it's nice to see the progress that, you know, that's been made over the last two or three years, you know, cause it, as we all know, it died. You know, Prairie Pioneer Days died a slow death and it's nice to see it going back in the right direction.
I will move on to a resolution establishing the Prairie Harvest Fest as an official city community event.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to declare Prairie Harvest Fest as an official city community event. We'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Crails.
Yes.
Salvi.
Yes.
Gullickson.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. Last but not least, we have a resolution to approve an airport grant offer. You can speak to that also if you'd like.
So we've applied for two different grants for the airport, one for a mower and one for snow removal equipment. We received word that we are going to be given four hundred forty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars with our share being eleven thousand one sixty-five seventy-five for the mower. So with that, we have to approve that we accept their offer and send them a letter in the next few weeks saying that we are wanting to get this grant, these grant dollars, so. I would ask that you move forward with this.
Do they, is there a mower out there now or does the city go out there?
No, there is a, there is one that needs to be upgraded.
Always.
It's gonna be a pretty nice mower.
Yeah.
And that's only to be used out at the airport too, correct?
I believe that that's how most of those grants work.
In reading, in reading through that, I thought I read that in there, that it was supposed to be for airport use only.
Right, we're, yes, and that needs to stay out there.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on the on the grant?
I had one thing, but I wanna double check the follow-up documents. They're both the same on on the second page for the resolution accepting where, whereupon now therefore number two.
Oh, yeah, I had Blaine's name. That, we did get that changed.
Okay.
Jeff brought that to my attention.
Cause both of them still show that on the attachments that we got.
Yes.
And where are we gonna buy that from? Is it open to us or do we put it out for bids or?
Um, I'd have to talk to the engineer. I believe they already had a quote from someone, but it has to be like that mostly American aid and it has to be.
There's a few stipulations you have to hit, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would assume they maybe need a competitive bid also, or do they just take the fun or?
Um, I think they could get quotes, but a lot of that stuff is a state bid.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion on the lawnmower grant? Hearing none, I'll entertain a res, a motion to approve.
I will go motion res, accepting a state grant offer in the amount of forty-four six six three for the Morris Bus Airport Charlie Schmidt Field Project.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve that resolution. We'll have roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Salvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Crails.
Yes.
Gullickson.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. Okay, we have now the city manager's newsletter.
Yeah, okay, so the outdoor recreation grant has opened, so looking at hopefully applying for two different grants. Looking at doing some fixing, crack sealing, seal coating, possibly doing some milling, depending on if there's any need for that. And then the second grant would be for the bathrooms and concessions at Wells Park Ball Field. So they are a fifty-fifty match, so we'd have to match up to fifty percent with no more than three hundred and fifty thousand being allocated to a project. So they're due April first, awarded in June, and then work can begin in twenty twenty-five. So we'll see how how those go and if we can find some funding for some of our projects.
Have we found, have we done any any bids or anything like that on the Wells?
Yeah.
We had just kind of that engineer's estimate when they did like a drawing of what we could do. And if I'm remembering correctly, it was about three hundred and fifty thousand, but I'm not positive. Thought it was around that three hundred thousand.
Wouldn't, when we take money in a grant form, then we have to follow some certain rules. Is that correct?
Depends on what the grant says and what, yeah. For building, it would probably just be building. I think you're thinking of like the historical society one.
Well, I'm I'm thinking about this one. I mean, if we take some money, yeah, I mean, obviously we won't have to in that one, but if we're taking some grant money, is there a certain way that we have to, a certain code that we have to build project to or or put it out on bids and all that kind of?
You'd have to build towards like the building code.
Engineer's estimate, you'd have to go through the, I think where Brian is trying to get to. You go out here to the lumberyard and say, give us a price and we put it up through the lumberyard and we're done, but still, if you're getting state money, you're gonna have to follow.
I think even if, I think even if you're gonna, even if you do it yourself, you're gonna have to, cause the way it looked for cost, you're gonna you're gonna be over that threshold from the state and you're gonna have to get two two bids anyway.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, there, that's all block and and all that. I mean, we talked about, you know, doing a a tin-sided one, you know, building, taking that one completely out and just building a completely new building there. And like you said, that would be some bid you'd get from like Uters Lumber or Morse Lumber here or Millwork or, you know, more of a a wood structure, I guess is what I would say.
But we could still go after funds to.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying, what restrictions does that give us? Do we have to build this elaborate deal and spend a whole, you know, yeah, we
Oh, gosh.
We get three hundred and fifty, but half of it, we wouldn't have to do that, okay?
I can't remember what the minimum was that they give out.
Okay.
But you don't have to go up to three hundred.
Like the fuel tanks to go through the process, use state money, was gonna cost us probably almost double of what we could go out to Westmore and say, we need a tank, put it in and just to go through the whole process is what what we're, we're talking.
I think as long as we keep the ADA compliance thing in our, you know, in our view that, you know, the structure itself and what we you know, I think anything we build is gonna have to.
Well, I mean, like, okay, if you had to grant up to three hundred and fifty thousand, then we had to come up with half of that?
So so that's saying the most you can get is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So your project could be seven hundred thousand dollars and you'd only get three hundred and fifty.
Okay, so they'll get half of whatever we go into the project.
Right, so if your project's a hundred thousand dollars, they'll give you fifty.
Yeah, okay.
We'll see what happens by June. I mean, it's a topic on on our park board, the park commission, that's one of our high priorities and we've talked about alternatives if we don't get a grant on the possibility of doing some remodeling of in-house and doing something different there, so. I say just, we gotta see what happens by June and.
Yeah, I mean, I think it should be high on our priority list. I I, you know, those, that park is very well used. You know, we need to have it accessible to handicapper and everybody that's out there. I mean, there's kids there and people that are all, you know, as soon as it's in the spring, all the way till the fall, so. It's important for our community if we're bringing more people into or community events, so. Yeah, I like to, that's great that you're working on getting money for that.
Did a webinar with the League of Minnesota Cities on what to expect with the legislative session. They started yesterday. With it not being a budget year, there's gonna be a lot of discussion on policies, possibly a bonding bill. They talked about how the Senate has switched and they'll have a new majority leader this year. So a few, few main things that that they'll focus on is the EMS sustainability. We kind of talked about that a few meetings ago. The SRO officers, which after the last legislative session had a lot of questions and a lot of departments pulling their officers out of the schools, so a lot of figuring out what is meant. Public safety duty disability will be discussed, maybe, maybe not. They they don't know if they wanna reopen it due to litigation type items that are out there. The one that I find interesting that that I'll be watching for is that local sales tax. I don't know if we ever will want to do that or or not, but it's something that I'm hoping they'll give and bring control over to the local governments instead of the state kind of pushing on things. But right now, it's a moratorium on it, so they'll be discussing a lot of that local sales tax in this session. They'll be looking at addressing housing through tax policies. So they talked a lot about discussion on zoning and land use, so have to be taking a watch on how they how they work on some of this, just to make sure that that we don't lose some of our local control to the state. And then environmental policies focusing on P-BAS and nitrates, solid waste and environmental reviews. A lot of these are coming into play with some drinking water stuff and how if they put on all these different policies that we have to follow, how are we getting some funding for those? And then a big thing with the environmental review is they have a group of activists that are blocking the Minneapolis Comprehensive Review from going through, so they wanna try and with through policy at the state to make it so this doesn't happen, that people will look at the environmental stuff after a review and when projects start going and not blocking that comprehensive plan that the the cities are putting in place. So those are some some big things at the legislative session this year. We did receive two tree grants, a hundred and four thousand eight hundred dollars for tree trimming and pruning. Both of these will be done in the next four years. They're four-year grants. And the other one is for twenty-nine thousand one oh six and that's for tree planting. So we've already started the tree trimming and pruning. So you can only do it until about March, so I think he's kind of getting to the end of where he needs to be for right now, this spring, so. And then at the council work session, we discussed blight housing, so I did talk to the building official. Michael is the gentleman from Inspectron that will be handling our city. And he's willing to look at a list of properties that we have, so Russ and I will go out and look. He wants me to get Joe involved and seeing kind of the process that would need to happen if we get to a place that we need to look at condemning and kind of how legally we can can do that. But he's willing to start the process of looking into some of the dilapidated buildings. So and then in your packet, you had a bunch of items and a letter of support that I would ask. It asks that we are able to submit, so the DNR met with Russ and I and then Matt, since he works for the Soylent Soylent Water.
Yes. Conservation.
Yes, so they came out, they're going to be going for. Yes, um, so they came out, they're going to be going for a grant for this Chrissy Dam. Um, said it's one of the most, um, top two needed projects in his district, so, uh, they have funding for it. So, um, they would just like a letter of support saying that we are, um, supporting them moving from the dam that we have to a, I think it's a rock. Call it a rock, um.
I've never heard it called that before.
Boulder Rock, I think it was called, something like that.
Chrissy Lake Dam.
A rock arch rapid, rapid structure.
But you know, it is, we almost had somebody get, we had almost somebody drowned out there. They got caught over the falls and got in the undertow there, so it is dangerous.
So, um.
I would make a motion to approve sending a letter of support for this project for the Chrissy Lake Dam.
I'll second it.
Thank you for bringing that information to us for discussion and if anyone has any, any items for or against, but I think that's, that's a, it definitely is eyesore out there. It's eighty-five years old and needs some attention.
Motion and a second to approve that letter of recommendation. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Did I get a second?
Yep, Brian did it.
Sorry, aye.
Delayed aye. So I think that's it. All those oppose. Same say. Carrie, good deal.
Yeah, and then just to kind of a note, the next meeting, um, both Patty and I will be at the tourism conference, so, um.
We're on our own.
Yes. Stacy will be here, so, um, yeah, I'll be able to gather some ideas on how to use these lodging tax funds.
Should be interesting.
Like I said, I've been, um, I just got an email the other day from, uh, Sharon in Marshall. Um, and kind of, she didn't, she didn't really say what they use them for, but she just said there's a group kinda like our board, but it's more of a nonprofit that they just see what they're doing and then kinda hand off the funds. So, um, I asked to speak or to give me her contact, so I got it and I asked her to have a phone call just to kinda go over. Cause there, if you look at their visitors website, they use it on a lot of things I think we could.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be a great opportunity. Yeah. So.
Any other questions on the city manager's newsletter? Okay, it looks like we need to set a date for our board review in April.
Looks like it's been set for us.
Yes. Yep.
Which is a Monday?
I just went, did my training yesterday. It was, just watched a little video, took a test and done.
Good job.
Perfect. So now I'm good till twenty twenty eight or nine, I think, something like that. Um, okay, any informational items to come before the council? I guess I first, uh, wanna thank the council for the workshop that we had, the work session. Uh, thank you for taking the extra time to do that. I, I know since we've started doing those, I think, uh, I think we could all agree they're, I find them very beneficial. We can get a lot of things done and, um, starting to see, you know, that we're making a lot of progress. I mean, it just felt like before we were kinda just spinning our wheels, but it seems like we're, we're getting some things done out like that. Thank you for putting in the extra time and effort. Um, we talked about maybe a couple more names for the, um, charter commission. And I don't know if anybody came up with a couple of more brave souls or not, but we're, we have about four right now and.
I need two.
Two more?
I need two. You sent me one, so I need two more.
Okay, so two more?
Yep.
Okay, hopefully we can find two brave souls out there. Just maybe just send them to you.
Yep.
As soon as you can think of somebody, great.
And those are four-year terms for two terms and then to be replaced from what I read just on the info you sent to us?
Yep.
So it's not a life sentence to somebody, uh, when we're talking to somebody that.
Okay. Any other items to come before the council?
I just would, uh, recommend if Becca has a chance, maybe talk to the high school to try and line up. We normally do a council meeting like in May. But just to try to work on that, we normally will do a, a morning meeting, what corresponds with their social classes. That Blaine used to go up and work with, uh, social classes and.
Jim Greenwald at the high school.
Kim Greenwald.
But just to give them a hands-on to see a, a council meeting in action and how things work and I think it's valuable to the students and the schools and I think if, if we have a little bit of advanced notice to make it work for everybody to take out our two block to, to do that.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we talked about, you know, maybe doing that out at the university too, campus. You know, talking to the, the leaders out there, the local leaders on, on campus. They'd like to see a meeting out there too, so. You know, maybe, uh, with something to keep in the back of our minds as we get closer to fall next year. All right.
And I would suggest if we do the school one, that we, uh, try to set it up so there's something interesting on the docket. Some of our bees can be a little dry, just eh 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 done.
Our last one, was it?
No.
No, that was.
Uh, sort of a really heated, there was a lot of back and forth on supporting the, the burial or the research or working with the university with the burial of the Indian or Native American. And there, it was a lot of back and forth, which was interesting. Talking, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just, that's why I ju- I just, if we're gonna do it for those, those kids that keep them interested, it'd be something, you know, fairly decent, looking forward.
So bring some drama to the.
May- maybe it'll inspire, if, if it's not so darn boring, they might inspire somebody to maybe wanna do it.
All right, anything else to come before the council?
Just Jason talking about Donna coming and talking. She'd be very interested. I think that would be something that would be for us a chance to talk to her and see what's happening, but maybe before we hit our hot summer, to do maybe May or June. If that works, just, uh, possibly throw that on our agenda also to have a, a visit from her.
Here's what I.
All right. Hearing. Oh, we need a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn?